Good morning. Welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, October 24, 2023. This, I'm Krista Yocum. I'm currently the Chair. To my right is Vice Chair, Commissioner Sean Flowerday. To my far right is Commissioner Roma Amundson. To my left, Commissioner Rick Vest, and to my far left, Commissioner Matt Schulte. Will you please join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We begin with the location announcements, Mr. Clerk.
Location announcement of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located at the wall of the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available for electronic viewing from the county clerk staff. Printing options are available upon request. These materials can also be viewed at the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Brings us to item one, minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on October 17, 2023.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Seeing no further comment, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries, five zero. Brings us to item two, claims. Two A, approval of the claims processed through October 24, 2023. And I'll note for Commissioners, there is an amendment for payroll.
I move approval of the claims processed through October 24, 2023, and amend it to include the payroll disbursements through October 18, 2023.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the claims. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries, five zero. Two B, approval of a claim to El Centro de las Americas in the amount of $10,199.22.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this claim. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
I'll abstain as I serve on the board.
Motion carries, four zero with an abstention. Item two C, approval of a claim to the mediation center in the amount of $3,592.50.
Yep. Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this claim. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Abstain.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries, four zero with an abstention. Item two D, approval of claims, including billings for goods and services beyond the 90-day time period provided Nebraska provides statute 23-135 for the Lancaster County Engineer dated October 17, 2023, for a total of $703.51.
Move approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries, five zero. Item three, consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by Commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice unless there is an exception. These items will be approved as one single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are the approval of A, amendments to the following county contracts. C-21-0824 with Maxwell Products Incorporated for the annual supply as asphaltic joint sealant. C-20-0759 with Executive Janitorial Corp for the annual services of the cleaning, accounting, engineering office, shop, and weed control office. C-21-05, excuse me, C-21-0750 with Language Line Services Incorporated doing business as Language Lines Solutions Incorporated for on-demand remote interpreting. C-21-0785 with Midwest Service and Sales Co. for the annual supply of Greater Blades. C-22-0927 with lamps, clean air specialist for the annual supply of HVAC filters. C-23-0641 was Felsberg Holton Olvig for on-call environmental consultation services. C-22-0695 with Shemmer Associates Incorporated for professional engineering services related to county structure S-59. B, right-of-way contracts with the following. Lynn E. Nordstrom and J. Steve Nordstrom Revocable Trust, North 112th Street and Davie Road, in the amount of $1,292.50. Mavis A. Reller and Linda S. Ruskowski Revocable Trust Life Estates, Southwest 29th Street and West Panama Road, in the amount of $2,192.50. Melvin R. and Marilyn J. Giles Revocable Trust, and Robert E. Spitz Revocable Living Trust, Southwest 91st Street and West Yankee Hill Road, in the amount of $1,225. Curtis D. and Amy A. Brown, Northwest 48th Street and West Branch Oak Road, in the amount of $955. Jared D. and Renee M. Brenner, Northwest 48th Street and West Branch Oak Road, in the amount of $1,067.50. C, consultant work order to amend county contract. C-23-0596 was Felsberg Holton Olvig for environmental engineering services for a federal aid project in North 40th, uh, North 14th Street from Alvo Road to Ashland Road. D, change order four to county contract C-23-0451 with payers incorporated for a project extension to add additional working days. E, utility permits allowing Bauer Underground, under project management of JEO Consulting Group, to install an underground ductwork and future installation of communication cable for the ARPA Broadband Phase III for the following. 2442 Run 1, 2443 Run 2, and 2444 Run 3. And F, receive and place on report the county attorney report.
Approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries, five zero. Brings us to item four, new business. Four A, a resolution in the matter of a request to vacate portions of a right-of-way east of the intersection of Northwest 40th Street and West Vine Street, more particularly described in Exhibit A, and located in Lancaster County, Nebraska.
Wait for our picture to pop up here, but this is the continuation of the request to vacate this particular portion of roadway. It comes off of West Vine Street. It's just east of Northwest 40th Street. This roadway has been primarily used as a driveway for the last 60, 70 years, and the owners of the property is requesting that it be vacated at this time. If you have any more questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I move approval.
Second.
Yeah, this looks just like something we saw last Thursday.
It does.
The engineering department does a good job of prepping us at our staff meetings on what's going on, and this, this just makes sense.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries, five zero. Brings us to four B, a resolution in the matter of signing the county annual certification of program compliance to the Nebraska Board of Public Roads, classifications, and standards for 2023.
Move approval.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. This document is a follow-up to our 1 and 6 road hearing. We usually wait a couple weeks to bring it forward just in case there's any additional letters or communications with the public that we would like included in this package. In this case, sadly, like the road hearing where there was no one from the public present, we received no additional communication about our program. And maybe I shouldn't say sadly. Maybe I should say everyone is happy with it. I guess we'll find out as the year goes on.
It's kind of hard to read that by getting no, knowing.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries, five zero. Brings us to four C, resolution approving utility permit 2296 and 2297, allowing ALO Communications LLC to install new communications line in the unincorporated communities of Martel and Holland.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. I would just like my office to be on record as opposing the approval of this permit. This permit does not follow the standards that have been set forth on our internet site. It does not follow the standards that have been set forth and previously approved by this board. Hey, we do make exceptions from time to time, but I think when we make exceptions, we have to be aware of future consequences. And that, is that an exception that we're making unilaterally now for everyone? That we're making a change to our overall utility permit? It isn't, is it an exception that in the future will impact our construction in the right-of-way and our management of the right-of-way, and our ability to maintain services to the public in, in many cases, such as emergency services, down trees, down trees that have power lines or other lines in them? You know, we actually have been in some of these unincorporated villages when there are down trees, and they do have live power lines in, or lines that we have to assume are live, and the ambulance is waiting behind us. Unfortunately, these things do happen. We do live in an area that has a lot of storm activity, and we have a lot of trees. And so it's not just that, but it's the overall maintenance of the right-of-way, and how does this long-term affect our program? Thanks.
Here, I'll, I'll go ahead and just make a motion to approve. The county engineers' points are well-made. I just think, I think fundamentally, there's an opportunity to bring in additional resources into this part of the county that I don't want to miss. And it's not that we're totally making an exception, and you're totally right about that.
Second. We have a motion and a second, but we do have someone at the podium, so let's go ahead and, and hear from you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Andrew Vinton. I'm the in-house attorney at ALO Communications. Generally here to answer any questions you have. We're very excited to extend our service into the unincorporated communities of Holland and Martel. Our designs follow the character and nature of the existing aerial electric utilities, and we feel that they are reasonable and will allow us to continue to push our, our fiber and our services into more rural parts of Lancaster County. Happy to answer any questions.
If this gets approved, what, I mean, what's the timeline look like for providing service to these areas?
Timeline is as quickly as possible. This is running tandem with our negotiations with the county attorney's office for the space within the Lancaster County conduit system. We hope to have that finalized here in the immediate future. So I can't give you an exact timeframe, but ideally by the end of the year.
I just would add that, just for clarity here, what the discussion's about this morning is the practice of putting fiber optics underground versus in these two areas, putting them on poles. The poles are already in place, sir, and there are wires on the poles. You would just be going from underground onto the poles in this specific area, the two that we've talked about. I think it's Sprig and Martel.
Yeah, it's Holland and Martel, and thank you for the question. That's, that's correct. We have permitted these aerial attachments with the pole owner, Norris Public Power. Electric utilities are already aerial in all these areas, so we are attaching to existing poles, not, not deploying any new poles, and just continuing to build in the character and nature of the existing utility.
And there are standards of maintenance to protect the public, and you are in agreement with maintaining all those standards?
Correct. There are, there's a detailed safety and inspection standard listed in our pole attachment agreement with Norris Public Power, which is included as an attachment on this agenda item.
Thank you.
I think you sense some hesitancy from the board because, of course, underground is preferred, but we also have an interest in getting service to these people as quickly as possible, because I know they've been waiting for a while. We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries, five zero.
Yep.
Item four D, a contract with Buell Trucking Incorporated to provide supply and hauling of rock riprap for the county. The cost of the county is not to exceed $150,000.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So this is our annual contract for riprap, or, you know, that's the fancy engineering terminology for big rock. And so we do use a fair amount of the larger rock to protect our drainage ways in Lancaster County, and that's why we're buying this rock.
Move approval.
It's always exciting to approve riprap. I second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries, five zero. Item four E, an agreement with Felsberg Holton Olvig for professional engineering services related to the replacement of county bridge J-138. The cost of the county is not to exceed $113,964.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. Bridge J-38 is another one of our bridges that is, it's in the Tier One development zone for the city of Lincoln. It is rated poor. It's scour critical. I believe it's also load posted. And so this is another bridge that we would like to get designed so that we can get it in the queue for construction as quickly as possible.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries, five zero. For F, a recommendation from the count, excuse me, a recommendation from the purchasing agent on behalf of the county engineer to award a bid to Van Dorn Valley Construction LLC for ARPA Culvert Maintenance Phase III in the amount of $565,638.81.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So last week, we bid Phase III of our ARPA culverts. They are shown on the screen here. It did come in about $85,000 under estimate, so that's kind of in line with what our bids have been coming in with this fall, which is awesome. So I bring forward approval for a recommendation of award of this contract.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this contract. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries, five zero. Brings us to item five, public comment. Those wishing to speak on items related to county business not on the agenda may do so at this time.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So I don't, and I apologize to Penny, I don't step in front of the microphone and talk at open comment. And of course, I don't expect you to comment on this, but I'm hoping maybe you cheer. So last Thursday, we didn't have time to get it on the board agenda, so you're going to see it next Tuesday. But last Thursday was a pinnacle moment for us in Lancaster County Engineering. It's the first time we have got a project all the way through the bidding process, a federally, a federal aid project. And of course, that is 98th Street, Old Cheney to A. We were super excited. That project had an estimate of $4.6 million, and it was very aggressively bid at 3.85. And so we have another major savings on a fall bid for that project, and we're excited to proceed on. You're going to see it on next week's agenda. But I'm just gonna, I'm gonna pause for a second and, and wait for the cheers.
And it's big news.
It is good news for all of Lancaster County, and of course, this will get paved another three miles of road that have more than 400, 500 cars a day on it. So it's significant. Thank you.
If we were allowed to comment on public comment, I would say, what a great day last Thursday was. We can't do that.
Is there anyone else present wishing to speak during public comment on items that are not on our agenda?
I feel like I should just get a stamp. It would take less time.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Thank you, though, for doing that.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here again to talk about election integrity. I wanted to share today, this is the result of your funding of the vulnerable election systems. This is what is happening because Nebraskans are denied their right to a fair and transparent election.
What about the concerns of, about terrorism in the United States in the wake of all of this?
Well, I think they're very valid. Yeah, I, I think these concerns are very, very valid. We've had open borders now for the last two and a half years, but we've had an illegal migration problem for the last three-plus decades. But we don't know who's in the country. We really don't. No one in Homeland, Homeland Security can tell you who is here. The Europeans faced something quite similar. They were bullied into admitting millions of Muslims from the Middle East and Africa. We've been bullied by our government to open the borders and let in effectively anybody who wants to come. So we don't know who's here. But we do know that Hamas, as well as Hezbollah, have positions in Mexico. Of the two, Hezbollah is much stronger, much larger, and much better equipped and financed. So we have to expect that once Hezbollah is in the war and we are against them and Iran, that much of our infrastructure will be at risk. Something as bad or potentially even worse than 9/11 could happen here. This brings us back to the whole issue of immigration and border security. We've essentially ignored it. The same politicians who are pushing for war against virtually everyone in the Middle East, which is what it boils down to in the final analysis, don't seem to have thought carefully about protecting us or our borders from all of the terrible things that we've seen in Israel. How much damage could these same people do to us in a shopping mall in the space of 15 minutes? It doesn't take much imagination to understand how dangerous this is.
Do you think that this war, if it comes, and it, as you said, it seems like it is, how will that affect American domestic politics? War traditionally has been used by the people in power to shut down dissent. Can you imagine that happening in this case?
Well, I think they'll try. Fortunately, thanks to people like Elon Musk, who bought Twitter and ended the censorship or suspended it, the truth does get through and reach Americans. But Americans will figure out pretty quickly, if two things tend to happen at once, you have the, the war overseas and the war here, but remember the economy and the, and the financial condition right now. If you turn on any of the business channels for the first time in my memory, lots and lots of analysts are coming on and talking about the Fed having lost control, the rising interest rates, you know, the inability to manage and cope with the sovereign national debt of 33 trillion. And that's the tip of a proverbial iceberg. We already have Americans who are struggling with inflation anyway. Now we're looking at potentially scarcity. We've drained our strategic oil reserve for all intents and purposes. If the Strait of Hormuz is shut down, if the Suez Canal is closed, we're in a lot of trouble in the short run, that's for sure. How rapidly can we recover from all of this? How many refineries can we put back into operation? How much drilling can we do quickly? The answer is not very much. So draining that strategic oil reserve was a very serious mistake.
But we'll be, as we become impoverished and chaotic and subject to these terror attacks, we'll be winning important moral victories, don't you think?
Well, in our effort to stand at Israel's side and help protect Israel, we have taken a different route and cast moral turpitude to the side. In other words, how do you help one without committing a war crime against the other? This is the problem with collective punishment. This is the problem with annihilating Gaza and trying to sweep out its population. That's unacceptable to us as Americans. I don't think if you sat down any of Israel's most ardent supporters in the United States and said, are you willing to trade the lives of several hundred thousand people in Gaza for the lives taken in Israel by Hamas? After all, Hamas and Palestinian Jihad were the fighters. They lost 1,500. There were 3,000 involved in the several waves of the attack. They're dead. Now we're looking at perhaps 5,000 civilians dead. How many more will we witness? Is that somehow or another justified morally? And I think a lot of Americans will struggle with that. That's why I say it would be best if we had a cooling-off period. I'm glad that the Israelis are waiting for additional naval power to arrive on station in the Mediterranean, and also for additional equipment, theater ballistic missile defense, and so forth. But we need to use this time to think carefully about how far we want to go, because right now, it's a one-way street to regional war. And I don't think anybody really wants that if they think about it carefully. Therefore, you know, looking at someone like Erdogan, however slippery we may consider him to be, his willingness to mediate is a bright light in an otherwise very dark sky. And we should look to that, because we don't want the regional war. It will destroy us economically. We're already in bad shape. We've already suffered because of the foolish intervention in Ukraine that has tried to destroy Russia.
That is.
Now we have Russia more powerful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken Anderson, Douglas County, Nebraska. I want to thank you for being willing to listen to so many angry people. As you can imagine, when people are the victims of crimes, they don't negotiate with the perpetrators very graciously. One of, there's a, a gal that has popped onto the radar of many, many, many more people since August. She's, she's been a public figure for quite some time, but since August, she's popped onto the radar of many, many more people. Her name is Dr. Hopper Haynes, Dr. Jan Hopper Haynes. And she values her reputation and refuses to forfeit it at any cost. If you listen to her videos, and they're only going to be on rumble. YouTube censors her. If you listen to her videos, you'll find that she's very careful, is what she says. Very careful. And she's been involved with quite a number of high-profile corporations, and she was recruited by the DoD, Department of Defense, to keep track, to, to watch, keep temperature on the chat on the internet as far, relative to the 2020 stolen election. She makes it very clear that Doc, that Donald Trump was re-elected in 2020, and that election was stolen. She makes it very clear, since August, that's how she popped up on the people's radars, that the Space Force possessed the very proof that everyone is demanding that President Trump was re-elected to set, to second term in 2020. She, I'm going to play this clip where she explains a little bit of her qualifications. explains a little bit of her qualifications. Time it. That's not going to work.
Strategy and change practice. Well, let me just find a way to stay at home but still communicate. So that worked out well for a short time until I got asked to be CEO of a streaming company.
Wow.
And I have been in the UK for 22 years. I love it here. Before lockdown, I was back in the States half the time. And so, you know, I had the best, but I will tell you, I like not having to travel. But also, in the course of my career, I have consulted with many companies and many government agencies, and I specialize in mergers and acquisitions, but also a subspecialty in understanding how to bring diverse cultures together, the way one company does something and the way another company does it. And I probably, I honestly don't know how many executives and managers I've trained, but it's got to be over 25,000 at this point. And so what happened was, I feel like I've kind of raised these people through their careers, and one of them, one of them is connected to the Department of Defense, and asked me if I would like to be on the task force. And I want to be really clear to people who are listening. The fact is that we are not part of a psy-op. We basically take the temperature. We've got anthropologists, we've got sociologists, we've got psychologists, we even have a forensic accountant on our team.
Let me stop it right there. I just wanted you to see her face, hear her voice, see her name, because she's going to be more and more well-known as the days go on here. And she assures us that the military will be getting involved to fix that stolen 2020 election. Thank you.
Is there anyone else present wishing to speak during public comment today? Seeing none, we may proceed with the announcements.
Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, October 26, 2023, at 8:30 a.m. in room 112 of the county city building. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold the following meeting and public hearing on Tuesday, October 31st, at 9 a.m. in room 112 of the county city building. The regular meeting, the public hearing regarding an application for a Class I liquor license for Starz Raymano's Pizzeria and Bakery LLC, 5580 West Mill Road, Suite 4 Raymond, and a corporate manager liquor license for Kaylee Starr. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447 or commish@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on L and K TV. L and K TV is available on ALO Channel 2 and Spectrum Channel 1300. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit Lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on YouTube and Facebook. L and K TV apps are available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV. Last item I have is adjournment.
Move adjournment.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Ammison?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Flouride?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries, five zero.